Good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting of Tuesday, February 18, 2025. The first hour of business of the meetings, the minutes of the meeting of...
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written.
Second.
We're moving second to accept the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anonymous of five. Got a couple of minutes to wait. Public hearing. There's a seat back up front here. Okay, Larry.
Yes. Continued public hearing on the application of Route 85 Realty Corp. for special permit approval regarding construction of 191,700 square foot wholesale facility and associated parking on 116 acre undeveloped property on the west side of East Main Street, southwest of Wildwood Drive, known and numbered as Zero East Main Street, Cessers Map 30, block zero, lot 34. It's in a BP Business Park Zone. Remind everyone, this is a continued public hearing from last month's meeting and its case is on remand from the land court. I'd like to point out to the members that in your packet, other than a draft decision with conditions, I copied you with the email that was forwarded to you this morning from Bowler dated February 14, 2025. It's a multi-page response memo to the comments that were received at the last meeting. Also included was an email from Jerry Hiddens, and that was forwarded to you as well by email.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening to the members of board, Joseph Fanton Ellis, on behalf of the applicant. We have our team with us again tonight. We perceive this meeting as an opportunity to review with the board the comment letter that we prepared. It's very extensive. It's my, in my opinion, based on my experience with this applicant and my experience in permitting sites that the application has presented and the supporting information has been prepared in accordance with the town's bylaws, in accordance with the standards set in the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Laws regarding sound and mitigation. And the applicant is confident that it has met the criteria that are required for the grant of a special permit. I recognize, obviously recognize, the significant opposition to this project. That is not surprising. That is the manner in which permitting goes these days. We have talked about this at great length. This is not a warehouse facility. This is a building that will be used for wholesaling with storage. As I informed the board in the prior meeting and has been resubmitted in the application and the updates that were submitted with the application, the distinction that needs to be made between the warehouse use, which is not allowed in this district, and wholesaling with storage is very, very simple distinction, but a crucial one. In a warehouse, the trucks that come to the warehouse and take product from it can go directly to consumers, which creates the type of traffic that the town of Milford has seen as a result of the large retailer distributor, Amazon, which, as you all know, deals directly with household customers. A wholesaling facility, on the other hand, does not and cannot deal directly with consumers. It deals with end users that are commercial users, and it is limited to the distribution of goods and products to users that are commercial or industrial. I have used the example before, and I will share it again for just purposes of the record. I think the best description would be you have an O'Reilly's Auto Parts store on Route 16 in Milford. Assume arguendo that Riley's Auto Parts Company was looking for a facility to distribute its product to its stores. They would be what we considered a possible tenant because they are not dealing directly with consumers. They are dealing with retail operations. The same could be said of other types of company. I've also used the example in a particular situation where you might have CBS or a facility like that that has trucks going to its pharmacies. Those are not always large trucks, and they don't go to your house. They go only to the pharmacy. So the facility that we are seeking to permit is wholesaling with, with storage that will not be allowed and cannot be used for direct contact with consumers. Additionally, we have spent significant amount of time doing the research relative to providing barriers and environmental sound barriers for this particular project. To the best of my knowledge, there has not been a recommendation from any of the town's peer consultants to improve the wall other than as we've shown it. Again, we put a significant amount of effort into the design of the wall. It's a substantial expense. We do it with full and complete understanding that it's necessary, and we're prepared to do it. Relative to the safety issues, I believe that the response letter that was submitted by Bowler properly references the proper codes for calculating the number of traffic trips that will be generated by this facility. And the study of the various intersections in and around the facility were completed in the manner that is set forth under the standards that is set by the national associations that deal with traffic counts. I understand very well that all traffic, like politics, is local and that there will be an impact on the town of Milford for the development of this property. And I will tell you that it's my opinion that there'll be an impact on the town of Milford for the development of any property that's left in the town of Milford. So this is not a question, in my opinion, of whether or not there will be an impact. There's going to be an impact from any development of this property. And again, I think that the proper mitigation has been set forth in the manner in which we presented to the board. With that, I will start talking, give the board the opportunity, please, to ask direct questions of the applicant. I recognize that the residents have every right to speak. I have long championed the rights of the residents to speak. However, I do think at this point that we've heard them, and so have the board. So I would like to focus on what we've done to answer the questions that have been asked by the residents and to that end, I'll turn it over to John Cusick, who prepared the letter. And John, you can bring Mark in or anybody else as you want going along. And again, I appreciate the board, the opportunity and the patience the board has had with the applicant. We've been in front of you attempting to develop this property now for quite some time. And again, I'm confident that we have taken into consideration all of the bylaws of the town of Milford, and we have done our best to meet the concerns of the residents, to develop the property in the manner which it was zoned. The zoning was approved by the town of Milford by a two-thirds majority. Every use that's in this spot, in this, in this area, in this zone, was approved by two-thirds of the residents of Milford. If it were not, we wouldn't be before you. So with that said, I'm going to let John take over. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. For the record, John Cusick with Bowler. Been before you a few times now. At the last hearing, you had taken a bunch of public comment, and there were some letters submitted as part of that. And it was asked that we could just address some of the comments that were, that were raised rather than just having it along back and forth at the end of the hearing. So much of which was, was raised the last hearing. It's really been part of the process from, from the beginning. It focused a lot about traffic, a lot about sound, a lot about zoning. So what we did is we took the comments, and there were five or so different comment letters. We essentially reconciled them. We put them in one response. And if there were six comments that had to do with one aspect of traffic, we bunched them together and provided a response. You know, if there were five comments about sound, we bunched them together and just put a, put a response. And speaking just from a, from a high level, and we do have the experts here to talk about that if you have specific questions with traffic. Again, this was fully peer reviewed by, by your peer review consultant. We went through multiple rounds and addressed everything and satisfied their, their comments. We've reiterated that, and for the record, we've reattached those in the response letter just so you, you had that, because I think that was part of the first process. Same with sound. A bunch of questions were asked about the sound. Those were included in the, the submittal that the tech had provided previously, but we've broken those out and responded to that accordingly. And then similarly with zoning with, with, that Joe just, just touched upon, there was a memo that was prepared early on just to say how this does comply with the use from a zoning standpoint. Again, we just reattached that memo and, and addressed it. So I can have folks get into this one by one with whatever detail you want, or just ask any generic questions. But essentially what came up really wasn't anything new. It was a lot of what we heard before relative to the methodology of the traffic study, where it was done, did it improve X, Y, or Z, those types of things. However, the, the chair and the board would like us to.
Board members, have a reference?
I've gone through the answers to the comments. I knew pretty much as, as I would have expected in terms of what the answers were. But, you know, I, we knew probably all of them, but I think it's good to have them in here. High-level points, obviously, this project is zoned for this location. The thing that says that this isn't zoned for that is, you know, there's nothing that we can do about that. It is, that's what the zoning is for this area. As to, you know, high cube warehouse or whatever, IT, you know, you use the best terms in IT to try to get a traffic count if they're not exactly there. And we knew that going in, and it was an agreement between the consultant and our consultant that this would be the, the best approximation of what traffic would be. And I think we all agreed that, that that's what that was. And they went through the other noise things to indicate what they had or had not used and what the options are in terms of that. So I think the major, the major items that were brought up were addressed in the letter that came back to us.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I have to agree with you, Joe. You know, yeah, we kind of went over the generic site plan, traffic noise, just kind of we referred from the neighbors. Martha had brought up what other uses would potentially be, be governed in this area. Larry, I'll just ask you quickly, has this property ever had a 40B application on it?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, it has had an approved 40B.
Approved, yes, now.
Right. So I just wanted to...
Yes.
Yes.
Wanted to be clear on that.
Could I ask you to ask how many units?
Between 268 and 300 units as a phase one.
268 to 300, you said? 30 trips per day per home.
And I don't want to go too far down there. And that's using that same parcel of land that you have kind of the site plan on?
That's correct.
Or to have extended even more so?
There was opportunities for, for more, but the approved portion was a phase one for the existing land that we're using.
Then again, I heard 250 to 300 residential units.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So thank you for that. So I think that, you know, that needs to be kind of talked about, what other potential, you know, buildings could be put on this, this, and the impact, again, with noise and with traffic, especially traffic. So that's why, that is something that a 250 to 300 unit apartment building at 40B is going to have a very significant impact, even more so than a wholesale facility.
Can you all sit this down?
I'm still, I'm still a little stuck on the, on the noise study. I know it's difficult to do that. I understand gathering the baseline, you know, getting some senses out there and, and getting an idea of what the baseline is today. And obviously, it's, there's quite a bit of noise already. And I know it's difficult to predict what the noise will be. I mean, I used to be in the rock and roll band. I mean, different frequencies, different frequencies.
I'm kidding.
Act differently. You know, you're standing inside, the guitar player's too loud. You go outside, it's the drummer and the bass. So I really don't know how a 15-foot-high wall, maybe 10%, is going to mitigate the noise. Can you explain that?
For the record, my name is Mark Wallace. I'm with Tech Environmental. So in our sound study, as you mentioned, we did do a baseline to establish ambient conditions. And that's, on the basis of that is based on the mass DEP noise policy. So you establish what the existing ambient conditions are, and then you're supposed to project or propagate what the sound would be from a particular facility. So in this case, we looked at rooftop equipment, idling trucks, trucks moving around the site to evaluate what those potential sound impacts would be at the nearest residences. And the, the policy allows for two things. One is up to a 10-decibel increase over ambient conditions. That's the maximum. And then it doesn't allow for what you were talking about, for example, different frequencies, no pure tone conditions from, from a source or from a facility. And we look at both of those parameters as trying to demonstrate compliance with the noise, with the noise policy. So, you know, we established the ambient conditions during the evening and the daytime conditions. And then we used a computational model, a three-dimensional model, that took into account the sound sources, the buildings, the, the, how much sound would be propagated from those different sources operating all simultaneously at their maximum sound level. And then we project what that sound level would be at the nearest homes, not only at the first floor level, but if they had a second story, we looked at those second-story locations as well. So when we did our analysis of that, we saw that there was, you know, we were getting right up to near the limit at the closest homes. So we then looked at what could we do to reduce that sound? And we, we did different evaluations of different barrier designs and, and dimensions and heights. And what we proposed was a 15-foot-tall wall to, and approximately 340 feet long, sort of in an L shape, to reduce primarily the sound that's coming from the loading dock areas, because that's the, that was the sound that was the, you know, because we can look at different sound parameters, not only the total sound from the facility, but we can look at different sound sources, whether it's rooftop equipment, trucks, you know, other types of sound sources. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a, you know, a sound wall that would minimize the noise at the closest residences. In our January 15th letter, we had a figure in there, or two figures, that showed contour lines, which are basically the sound levels that are projected, you know, you know, at, from the facility itself. And in those images, you could see that the wall took in the contour and may, basically reducing that sound. So, you know, we did quite a bit of evaluation on trying to minimize the noise from that. So it's a two-step process. You know, it's establishing what the ambient conditions are and then doing a, a model assessment to demonstrate whether your facility is going to be in compliance or not.
We would even be open to a condition where, once the facility was constructed and operating, we would go back, we could perform another sound study, ensure that what we presented is, is actually what's being produced. And if not, we would further mitigate to ensure that what we presented is what's being produced.
We also, I just want to add one other thing. I think we also put in our package, I believe, good neighbor policies as well.
Yes, good neighbor policy.
So there are a number, I think 13 or 14 items that we had listed in there that would help to minimize noise. One of those is, for example, I know there's concerns about backup alarms. There are white noise backup alarms that are, that can be used on equipment at the, at the, at the facility. The difference between, you know, white noise backup alarm, say, than the traditional backup alarm is the white noise spreads that sound energy so that it's not going as, as far away. It's basically what it's supposed to be doing is protecting the employees from a truck backing up or, or a piece of equipment backing up. So it spreads that energy out. It's the same amount of energy, but you're not putting it in one particular frequency, which then can travel quite a bit. So you hear that sort of beeping sound. So the white noise is something you might hear, like, you might see from an Amazon truck. It makes a squawking sound or, you know, that type of thing, or shushing sound, or a couple of different kinds. And they're, they're very effective in reducing those kind of sound impacts that, that neighbors are concerned about. Again, it's an OSHA require, you know, it's, again, it's not regulated by the mass DEP noise policy, but it is something that could be used to help minimize, you know, nuisance noise conditions.
So with the, with the plan to go 24/7? I know that you had a baseline for worst case in the morning, worst case in the afternoon. Was there something done in the evening?
It was done, we, so when we set up the sound meter, we did measurements over 24 hours over a seven or eight day period. And so when we did our analysis, we actually took the quietest, I believe it was at 2:00 in the morning. That was the quietest sound level during the nighttime, and we used that to do our evaluation. And then we did a subsequent evaluation due to comments from the board to look at daytime operations, which obviously have a higher sound condition. And we, we looked at that as well and, and showed that we can comply with the mass DEP noise policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to direct the gentleman to the one available seat.
Any other comments? Some questions from the board right now? Okay, I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna open up to the public. Please state your name, your address.
Thank you.
And all, all the, everything goes through the chair. Not a debate in society here, please. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Deborah O'Meara. I live at 4 Wildwood Drive. So I'm really upset about this. Um, I've spoken a couple of times, so I'll make it brief, but I do want to say that, um, I've said this before, I'm sure that their I's are dotted and their T's are crossed and the sound wall, I'm, I'm sure it's all like part of, it's part of life in letting a company do what they want to do on the property. But ultimately, honestly, no matter what they do, it's the wrong thing for where I live and the people around me. It's the wrong thing, no matter how much sound barriers they have, no, from, from the traffic to the sound. Like I said, I can hear 495 when someone beeps their horn because it carries. I mean, it's just, it's brutal as it is. I hate living where I live. Pay taxes there for over 35 years. I'm a single homeowner. I, I have to put on ACs and white noise to be able to sleep as it is now, never mind with a facility there. And I'm also concerned, well, I don't want to say the wrong thing, but when we had the meeting in the summer, it was denied. And the attorney rushes up and says, if we change the time from not 24/7, will you allow this? Then the planning board gets sued individually. I mean, it's, they want what they want. And, and no matter what they do, they might be right, the sound, the studies, they might be right, but it's the wrong thing. So that's my plea. It's the wrong thing. People have two little kids on this, across the street, two little girls. It's just disastrous. I was late today, and I apologize for walking in late and, you know, trying to disrupt things. But I lived there, and I couldn't get here. It's brutal, just as it is. And, and somebody has money, and it's what they do for a living, they want to, you know, get properties and build them up and do things. Good for them, but it's the wrong thing in that particular area. Hopping Brook and Hall's denied it, and they're an industrial park. We're a neighborhood. It's just, it's just horrible. And it's just, it's just the wrong thing to do. So I just want to plead with the board, it's the wrong thing ultimately, no matter what they do. Please deny it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Johnny Hogan. I live at Zane Ridge condo. I didn't realize this was going to go, this is a 24-hour-a-day thing.
365.
That's, that's crazy. Milford's a town ordinance, 7 to 7 noise ordinance. You cannot make any noise prior to 7:00 AM, after 7:00 PM. You'll have the police call on you all night long.
Excuse me, Jim Flanagan. I live at 8 Whispering Pine Drive. Been there for 27 years? 28 years? Well, unfortunately, the public has not seen the memo that you people have, so it's a little hard for us to read about that information. But the lawyer for the applicant said that no one in the town has challenged the sound study. I'll challenge the sound study because the sound study that, that I was sent to by Mr. Duncan does not have any of the modeling data, and I asked for very specific information about their assumptions. They drew the lines, but they never showed what the source of, and how much sound they were projecting, as a decibel level, and what assumptions they made in the model. So none of the modeling information has been presented to anybody. They just drew some lines on there and said, this was the output of the model. How can you, how can you judge that? I challenge that, and I want to see the data. The other request that was made by the residents here prior was there were meetings from, between the town council and the lawyers for the applicant, and we have not seen any of that data. What was discussed? Who attended those meetings? We should know what that information is. We have a right to know. That information is being kept from the public, and it looks a little fishy when you don't give the information.
You received correspondence explaining that that's privileged information.
I did not receive that correspondence.
Well, the email was sent out responding to the request.
I checked the emails again today. It was not there.
This was back when you asked the question.
Well, sorry, it wasn't received.
That's privileged information, client, attorney-client privilege, either on their end with that attorney, and these guys are on this end with town council and the planning board.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I didn't receive it.
The first thing I did after the meeting, the next morning, is I talked to Larry. I asked him about it because he asked for public information, and that's, he checked into it, and that's when he came back to a response. And he said he was sent it out, so that's...
Okay, so clarification, I got that.
Again, we did not ignore it. We dove right into it to make sure that we weren't holding something back that was supposed to be out to the public.
Okay, I will make a, a comment about that now that I have that information, that client-lawyer privilege seems a little suspicious. I thought the town is, I thought we were...
That's right.
I thought we, we are the representatives. It seems funny that the town council is supposed to be representing us.
No, the town council represents the town, represents the planning board in this instance.
And the individuals that were...
And the individuals.
Okay, all right. So thank you for the clarification. I do have another comment. I already talked about the contours and the sound study. In the traffic study, and I understand the traffic study methodology is okay, but as I requested it the last time from, from the residents there, that the traffic data is not accurate as of today. It needs to be updated. So, you know, if you take data that's old and you use progression data, growth data that's old, it shouldn't be applicable. That's all I have. Thank you.
I don't want this word.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to give you a quick outline.
What's your name?
Raymond Abus. I live at 53 Zane Circle. And I was ill at the last meeting, so I was unable to be here to voice my opinion. I come from Framingham, Massachusetts, born and raised. My wife's grandfather built Framingham Union Hospital, Keith Tech, South High School. His, his name is on the wall of the memorial building, the local one. So I have a history there, but things got into, through what you would call gentrification, out of hand, too noisy, too busy, too crazy. I packed up my family. We have relatives here, my adders. We have relatives here, my adders, Chris Foley's. We moved here for peace and quiet. Now, this is coming across the street. And it's 24/7, 365. With quiet property, real property law, not law, but PS law, says that you have the right to quiet enjoyment of your property. I think we're gonna lose that. It's 365 days a week, I mean, a year, 24/7. If you care about us, find a normal use of the property. That's normal business hours. It's not gonna infringe upon our quiet enjoyment of our property. We're all, Zane Circle is a 55 community. We're in a whole ass bank. We just want peace. Please. I thank you.
That's him.
Hi, my name's Alison Poison. I live at 11 Wildwood, Pine Drive. At the last meeting, the applicant's attorney stated that the planning board has a responsibility to the town to manage the long-term growth, including generation of tax revenue. There was also a intimation that this should occur even at the expense of some town residents, meaning us. The planning board also had a responsibility to the town residents. This should be self-evident and not have to be stated. It is, however, explicitly stated in the section 1.10D of the zoning bylaws. That zoning bylaw states that the use for which the special permit is being sought will not cause substantial harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens, also us. The planning board committed a number of residential houses built in this area. People own these houses or raising families. How can the planning board now commit a 41-bay, two-football-field-sized, high cube warehouse wholesale facility to be built in the middle of a residential area? There are no other examples in, in the town of a large high cube warehouse slash wholesale facility existing in the middle of a residential area. These are all in industrial parks. This is good stewardship on the part of the planning board. Don't change that now. Let me ask you a question. If this was going up in your neighborhood or your parents' neighborhood or your children's neighborhood, would you want that for them? Protect our neighborhood as if it were your own. Reject this proposal. Thank you.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank the planning board for allowing us to speak here today. My name is Scott Harding. I live at 19 Zane Circle. I'm the current president of the Zane Ridge Condom Meeting Trust. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the 70 homes in our community. I have with me 44 additional signatures, along with the signatures that were obtained in previous meetings, which I believe brings our total to 116 signatures. So I'd just like to make a couple of points because people have talked about this on a regular basis at the previous meetings and I don't want to go over decibels and noise and walls and things like that. We all know what's being presented. I would take a little bit of an issue with the applicant's attorney and his describing a, what the, the difference between this warehouse, distribution facility, whatever you want to call it, because it doesn't distribute directly to residents. It's irrelevant who they're distributing to. The point is what's going on at the warehouse, how that's gonna apply. I took a, a look at the town's pollists' recent situation with their applicant for a warehouse. A lot of it does not apply here, but a lot of it actually does. And in the end, their point was that, in their denial of the applicant, was that regardless of whether they met the criteria that was outlined, excuse me, excuse me, in the, in the bylaws describing what was allowed and what was not allowed, that their facility, and I believe this one as well, would be a negative impact on all of the surrounding communities, neighborhoods around there. And it's not just whether or not they meet the criteria that's put in the bylaws, but how it is going to affect the health and well-being of the residents that are already there, who also already pay taxes to the town. And I think we all have a right to expect that we can have a normal use of our, an enjoyment of our homes, as others have pointed out. And I would beseech the board to consider what the actual impact will be on those of us that live nearby.
Yes, sir.
If I might, I'm sorry, can I?
Yes.
Put down the signatures that I have. Thank you. Jim.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Carl Leaders. I live at four Pine Hill Circle. I agree with Jim that if this information is available that explains the way the questions that we had in the front should be great, if it's made available to us to go through it, help our understanding. But in the meantime, at the last meeting, the town engineer did state that the traffic study that was done, both as a wholesale facility and a warehouse, and that the result was an acceptable level of traffic. I sent an email to the town engineer asking for a clarification to help me understand and hopefully this, this information will. But I never heard any reply back. So to summarize my questions, maybe they're answered in this study? The study was based on 2022 data. Based on Milford's 2024 Comprehensive Plan, the volumes are like more than twice what was in the study. Is that correct? Further, the land use code 154 was used. It's the least intensive code that could be used. That's point one trips per thousand square feet per day. If that is in fact, that was used in the study, if that is in fact the case, why isn't that in the conditions of approvals for this? I don't see anything there that limits the traffic volume to what they used for the study. The zoning bylaw 2.2.2 states that where the activity might be classified under more than one use, the more restrictive shall govern. This would require using land use code 155, which is orders of magnitude greater in terms of the volume. It translates to a trip every five minutes. Wouldn't this greatly understate the impact of the traffic at Beaver Street Route 16 and Beaver Street Route 109? Lastly, the study only considers the impact at peak hours. Now, I understand that's how these studies are done. However, it doesn't take into account the impact on the neighborhood 24/7, as others have stated earlier. I did make a call to Mass DOT and speaking with a resident there, I learned that before permit to grant access to Route 16 from, from the proposed site would be granted, Mass DOT will do the following. They'll use their own currents traffic study and not rely on an outdated traffic study. They'll look at the proposed facility and view it as a high-volume, 24/7, 41-bay, high cube warehouse and not a wholesale facility. They will identify it as a high-traffic volume 155 land use code, which is a vehicle every five minutes, not a low-volume 154. They will include Beaver Street and Route 109 intersection in their analysis and then not ignore it, as the proposal has done. And there are, as they advise me, there are already issues at Beaver Street Route 109. Also with the, with the noise study, if in fact it's not gonna impact us, why not codify that in there with specifics like point one, the land use, point one traffic volume? Why not codify specifically what the noise volumes will be in the, in the conditions so that we have something against which we can measure how this proposal is performed? In summary, I, I would just say it's gonna be hard to measure all this. Just deny the proposal before it gets to this point. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is Diane Gogan from Zane Circle again. And I just want to congratulate or thank all of our neighbors, the neighbors from Wildwood and Whispering Pines. We're talking over 500 families. And we're aware that the proposed project will increase traffic congestion, sewer and water concerns. I mean, how many times do we have water breaks and we turn on our faucets and it's just a trickle? Fire safety interference, sound pollution and light pollution. They haven't even addressed it. It's gonna be like daytime. Daytime 24/7, you know, noise 24/7. This is ridiculous. And then the, I, I commute. I take that road, Route 16, every week, 8:30 in the morning. It's already crawling and you're gonna add these massive trucks. We have health issues and safety issues and it will decrease all of our home values. So you're, you're, you know, you're creating health issues on top of financial issues for all of these residents. This level of daily frustration will elevate our stress to the max for decades. And it has been proven by countless medical communities that chronic stress like this impacts the body. Long-term effects of chronic stress, it elevates your cortisol, heart disease, stroke, heart attacks. It can, that much stress causes cancer. You're gonna make all of us sick. And it's a very litigious society, people. You know, we will be coming after you people. So the two questions I have, do you not care 500 families will have to deal with prolonged stress and severe harmful health issues? And my other question is, do you not care that 500 family homes will lose property value?
Charlene Flanagan, eight Whispering Pine Drive. And some of what I'm gonna say has been already brought up, but I'd kind of like everyone here to, and at home, to imagine bringing a project of this scope into your neighborhood. Imagine you're being forced to move out of your home to avoid exposing your families to such untenable conditions as the noise pollution from the blasting, heavy equipment and diesel tractor trailers. Safety issues, most of those that we cannot even anticipate at this point. Possible cracks in your foundation. Think of the health issues that may include trouble breathing, allergies, sleeplessness, headaches and overall stress from large trucks moving in and out of your neighborhood 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year, every year. Is there even one holiday off? Imagine how your property value will be affected, your most valuable asset for most people. Perhaps you're planning to pass your home down to your kids or your grandkids. Would you or they even be able to rent property under these circumstances? Turn your attention to the traffic on Route 16, which is already slow and way too congested. How much worse will it be if the Route 85 Realty Group project is approved? I think we all know that the traffic studies are not always accurate. It took us about 35 to 40 minutes to get here from four miles away today. Most importantly, let's imagine that there is someone on the planning board that sympathizes with residents and not with the developers and that they would, and that they would do the right thing and they would vote against this project to protect the Milford residents that have worked long and hard and paid their taxes every year to preserve their home and property value. Would any of you honestly vote for this to be in your neighborhood? Thank you for the consideration.
Yes, sir.
My name is Alison Poison. I live at 11 Whispering Pine Drive. And basically I want to ask the question, why are we here? We are here because we have an applicant who wants to build a high cube warehouse that would run 24 hours, seven days a week in the, in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And when the planning board rejected their proposal, the applicant took the board to court to scare them into not following the town bylaws that are in place. No matter how many times the concerned residents and taxpayers recite the bylaws that would, that should and would put a stop to this project, it seems that, it seems to be unheard by the board because they have concerns about the lawsuit. What is the importance of adhering to bylaws? Bylaws are established to maintain order, safety and quality of life in a community. They reflect the collective interests and values of the residents and are designed to protect the town's environment, infrastructure and public welfare. Ignoring these bylaws could set a dangerous precedent undermining the rule of law and the democratic processes that uphold community standards. If we are not going to adhere to the bylaws, maybe we should try to use a common, a common sense approach. In doing so, I would like to mention, it seems both the traffic and sound studies are fulfilling the applicant's needs, which are not realistic and do not protect the residents from actual traffic and sound volume, volumes generated. The traffic study provides the applicant, provided by the applicant is from 2022. In last month's board meeting, our group provided the board with the information from a massive DOT traffic study, which was completed in 2023. This traffic study details much higher traffic volume, which is more recent and is more accurate to present day traffic patterns. Why are we not using the data from a more recent unbiased traffic study? The sound study taken accounts for sounds being generated on HVAC units on the building's roof and trucks and idling, which are the lowest sound-producing elements of a facility this size. If the trucks are backed up and idling at the loading docks, how did they get there? Did they not make any sounds when pulling into the facility's lot and when backing up to the loading docks? Did they not, did they not make the mandatory 95-decibel backup sound? We all know there is, there are going to be more sounds produced at higher decibels for a truck to maneuver to the loading dock so it can sit and idle. To summarize, the lawsuit to bypass local bylaws and approve a special permit based on misleading traffic and noise studies stands to undermine the principles of fair and informed decision-making. It is imperative for the planning board to ensure that any development, developmental align, any development aligns with the established standards and truly benefits the community as a whole. For these reasons, the proposal for the applicant's request to build a high cube warehouse that would run 24/7 in the middle of a residential neighborhood should be rejected.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Speed select, I fund you the circle. I think all of the people on this side of the room know how often we lose power. Really isn't so bad. I'd rather lose electric than lose my water. We know how often we lose water. It really sucks, doesn't it? You can't flush your toilet. Now, we have a facility that looks to be put in across the street. And I'm just concerned, what happens when the water goes out? Do they close down? If they can't power up, if they can't, if they can't, why the, the sprinkler system? Do they shut down? I mean, it just seems logical to me. And we're not talking about, I mean, where else in town has a single thread of water to come? Anyplace, anyplace, no. Certainly not a warehouse. There are lots of fire regulations that say how sensitive something like this is. When we look at stuff in the news about train wreck and people are just stuck because they happen to live next to them. We don't know what they're gonna be putting in this facility. We don't know what they're going to be putting in this facility. Could be anything. Water can go out at any time. All due respect to the Milford Fire Department, they can do miracles, but not this one. I just think that that should be a major, a major consideration in this project. Please. Now, this isn't just some crappy place in Milford. This isn't some floodplain off of the Charles River. We're talking about a neighborhood that we neighbor million dollar houses in Holliston, Hobbiton and Milford. And you're, you're looking to put a facility there that doesn't belong. And you know, it's zoned for that. We have no choice, but we do. We don't have to say yes. This is a special permit, you know? We already knew enough to say no. And they came back. But they didn't change anything. You put 42 B's of trucks coming in and out, 200 parking spots. That's 400 entrances and egresses a day, if my math is correct. To your point, I would take the 200 residents in a 40B that all go to sleep at night and they respect the neighborhood. And they don't drive 18-wheelers 24 hours a day.
Keep it down. There's one person speaking, please.
Thank you for your consideration. We don't have to say yes. We do not have to say yes. We have a choice. It's why we're here. Thank you for listening.
Is anyone else? Yes, sir, in the back.
It's Scott Brickley from 433 East Main Street. And I don't really have too much of my own things to say here tonight because pretty much everybody said everything that I feel in my heart. And it's just, I can't believe we're still, this is still a possibility because it's like, it's craziness. But whatever hears that, this, it's one of the worst uses of this property. It really is. I know it's zoned for it, but I think more like this gentleman said here, a 40B or something like that would be much better, even though you can have more cars. The thing that concerns me is, living on 433 for so long, 25 years, I've seen how truck traffic can get and to think that you're going to have trucks coming out, possibly two at a time or maybe three at a time, and they're all going down the same way, coming down Route 16 towards Beaver Street. It's, it's just going to be, it's going to be too much for that area. It really is. It's just, it's, this is a really bad choice, use of property.
Agreed.
That's pretty much all I have to say.
My name is Wilson Valdez and I work with Drive. And I would like to ask people present here, like a symbolic board, who agreed to vote in the 90s project.
Yes.
Yes, I would like to add, you know, the wear and tear on the road because of the increased traffic.
Close your knee, please.
Saika Kupasami, 32 Zane Circle.
For a matter of, do we close a public hearing and then vote? I just. Just wanted to make sure on that.
Ask Attorney General.
Joe, once.
Just have Attorney.
Thank you. If I may, if the board is considering closing the public hearing, and I do think it's time to close the public hearing. I would just like to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank staff at the town hall for their continued cooperation in the processing of the application. I'd like to thank the board for the amount of time that you've spent reviewing this application. Your review has been diligent. And I also want to thank the residents for having the time, taking the time to support their position, a position that they have a right to support. I just want to make a couple of comments regarding that. We're, we're not in, we're not in a residential area. I understand that there are residences, residences around this particular piece of property. This property was rezoned by the town of Milford by a two-thirds majority at a town meeting for the purpose of developing business park uses throughout the community of Milford. The plan in the town of Milford was to designate certain parts of the property to be developed residentially, certain parts of the property to be developed industrially, commercially and for retail uses. You have the business park zone. There are limited uses available there. This is one of the uses that you expected to have permitted in this zone because you added it. I don't mean you, the board, the town added it specifically in the list of allowed uses. I recognize that it requires a special permit. I certainly recognize the requirements of a special permit. And I, I believe that the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the technical provisions of the Milford zoning bylaw. I do not think that the applicant has ever threatened this board. And I know that that comment has been made publicly and I know the board doesn't feel, I presume the board does not feel threatened. The lawsuit is a technical request to have the remand for a further hearing based on the preliminary hearing and what, what took place there. That is not unique from the Massachusetts Land Court. The land court prefers to send the matters back to local boards to have them reexamine and have this board have the opportunity to make a decision with additional information. And again, the additional information has been provided by the board. I would also point out that the applicant has been very willing to accept conditions on the property, specific conditions regarding justifying the traffic counts. So again, we spoke openly and cooperatively about having a condition in the special permit that would require the applicant to identify the tenant prior to occupancy and to demonstrate to your board that the traffic patterns and the traffic trips that would be generated by that tenant would be in accord with the projections that were made by the studies, which were reviewed by your independent consultant, were not, were not rejected. That, yes, they asked for additional information. That information was provided. The applicant has also stated that it would be willing to return to the planning board for purposes of demonstrating that the sound wall, and again, a significant expense for the development of this property, will be the building of that wall, that the sound wall is functioning in a manner that keeps the decibel levels within the state mandates. So to the extent that there is concern of the residents, and I recognize their concerns, that they don't know what's going to happen there, the fact of the matter is, is the applicant has been willing to agree to conditions that will require the applicant to return to the planning board and to give the planning board another bite at the apple to make certain that the very things the residents want protected are in fact protected. Again, this board, with the experience of the board members, recognizes that no project is perfect and that there is impact on every budding piece of property in any kind of development that's made. That is the nature of land development. And it, it doesn't change whether it's a residential use, a commercial use or an industrial use. There will be impacts. And the board has been concerned with minimizing those impacts. I believe that the applicant has been cooperative with the board in reaching a consensus relative to how those impacts can be reviewed and, and be subject to further review by the board. So I, I want to again thank the board for the credible amount of time that you've put into this. And again, I think that the application has been properly submitted and meets the four corners of the Milford zoning bylaw. I don't think there are any deficiencies in it. I understand that there are criteria that need to be met and that there are conditions that will be placed on the use of this facility. One thing I'd like to say, not knowing what, whether, who the tenant will be, it may be, and we don't know, it may be that the tenant that we get might have less impact on the neighborhood than a retail use or a residential use because many of these distribution centers. And again, I know that the residents have continually referred to this as a high cube warehouse. It is not that. It is, that is not allowed in the zone. That is not what the applicant is presenting for approval and it is not what the building inspector and the planning board will allow to be in that building. That would be a violation of the zoning bylaw. So we don't know who the tenant's going to be, but I know from personal experience that the type of tenant that we're seeking and the type of tenant that basted into that building is one that might not have a significant impact on the neighborhood because it may be distributing products in a, in small trucks to outlying facilities. And again, we don't know that, but I'm confident that when we do come back, we'll be coming back with a tenant where we can prove that we meet the, the criteria of the traffic study that we presented. And with that, again, I thank the board for your diligence and your attention to each and all of the detail, of the many details that we presented. Thank you.
I guess I would say something, if that's okay, if the residents are done and the applicant is done. It's the board's turn.
Yeah, anytime you want.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to kind of, I'm going to end with a motion. I'm going to end with a motion. Are we ready for that? Oh, we have to close the public hearing.
No, you can.
You don't have to.
You can, you can talk.
Okay. So I'd like the residents, you've done a great job, very well informed and impassioned arguments. And I assure you that I think I can speak for all of the board members, that those, those really are taken into consideration, a lot of respect for the work that you all have done. Massachusetts laws favor the owner's right to develop. Absence site constraints such as wetlands or ledge, something like that, the land is going to be developed. And there are things that could go on this property that are worse. You could have a helicopter landing spot in, am I wrong? Oh, okay. I thought you were correcting me, which I would, please do if I speak wrong, if I misspeak. Yeah. Helicopter. Larry, am I mistaken? A helicopter landing pad. Excuse me. Am I correct, Larry, that a helicopter landing pad could be developed here without special permit?
Just checking.
Site plan review only, I believe.
Yes.
That, that's my recollection as well.
Yeah, a helostop, yeah.
Which I assume is a weird word for landing.
Helicopter, yes.
Yeah, landing a helicopter. And granted, that may be farfetched, certainly. Route 16, until a short few years ago, I commuted Route 16 to Natick from, I live near the hospital, through town to Natick. It's 14 miles. It could easily take over an hour. I know Route 16. It's a nightmare. It is, however, a state highway. And state highways, even though, you know, they were designed 100 years ago, whatever, and could never predicted today's traffic volumes and big trucks and all of that, that state highways are where the heavy traffic is supposed to go. That's just kind of how it works. There's so much more I wanted to say. Anything that's developed there is going to have an impact on the neighbors. This has not been an easy decision for me. I have felt some weight that perhaps I didn't need to feel, that mine might be the swing vote because if the rest of the members vote as they did before, mine, assuming they do, mine is the swing vote. I'm a new member to the board, for those of you that aren't aware, and was not able to vote the previous time. This has not been an easy decision at all, but I will make a motion to close the public, do I have to close it first? Close the public hearing and vote and make a motion to approve the project. I think I need a second before I go on. Okay. I do, that's, excuse me, that is subject to adding the condition as suggested by the sound engineers, that if the wall does not, the noise barrier wall does not achieve the stated goal, that it be modified until it does. And I would ask that that be added as a condition in, in the board, in the board's decision. But again, I've really struggled with this, but in the end, I move to approve the project, subject to that condition.
A second.
We moved in second and we approved the project.
One quick discussion.
Yes, sir.
And Martha, in your motion, obviously you had the additional condition. Are you also including all those conditions that Larry had previously set?
Yes, yes.
Which was 22 conditions.
Very well written, if, if.
Yeah, and has been keeping track. So I just want to make sure that the motion does carry these 22 kind of pre-drafted conditions along with your 23rd condition regarding the sound.
Thank you for that clarification.
If I could clarify, as a, as a run-on from that, point out that there was a phrase in proposed condition 17 in, in the draft, that the applicant needs to submit an executed copy of the lease with a tenant. And I added the line that all financial terms set forth in the lease may be redacted because we originally, when we looked at this proposed draft, it didn't have that language in there. That was a concern for the applicant, so I added that. That really doesn't have, but.
Thank you.
In going through, in terms of traffic, somewhat noise and stuff, and the usage that is permitted, I was thinking one way to possibly address that is that in a wholesale environment, we had talked about these, these sites being 24/7, but my, my understanding in any of those is that it's 24/7 mostly for receiving. That you may get trucks in at whatever time they need to go in and whatever, but that the shipping portion of it being a wholesaling and those other places on the other end, they're not open 24 hours. And considering that all of this is relatively easy to get to in terms of the manifest for any of the trucking, I was thinking that one thing that we could do in terms of trying to minimize the amount of usage 24/7 is to say that no, no shipping vehicles would be allowed between 10 and 6:00 in the morning or some, some hour, you know, I'm throwing that out as a possibility, it could be different, but that, you know, if, if we find that there's stuff going in at all points in time, we can ask them to come back in and let's see the, the shipping manifest, not to look at what the hell's going in and out, but to say, at least find out when the times are and making sure that the only thing that's arriving are things that are coming in and not things that are going out. I don't think that puts an undue burden on the applicant. Again, because I believe that these facilities aren't running, they're not running to a distribution. CVS isn't open at 3 o'clock in the morning to accept distribution and neither is O'Reilly. So I don't think that that, if those are the types of people that they're truly trying to get in, that would affect. So that would be another, another article that I would suggest that we could possibly put into the decision. And again, that wasn't part of what Martha had put in, but I would, I would think that adding that would not be, would be appropriate. And again, the discussion in terms of time, I'm just throwing out 10 to 6, it could be different, but, you know, I think that that's appropriate or at least that, that feels appropriate to me.
That's a good idea, Joe.
Larry, you got that?
No. It's vaguely, I'll have to watch the tape.
And again, that wasn't part of what Martha had put in, but I would, I would think that adding that would not be, would be appropriate. And again, the discussion in terms of the time, I'm just throwing out 10 to 6, it could be different, but, you know, I think that that's appropriate, or at least that feels appropriate to me.
That's a good idea, Joe.
Larry, you got that?
No. I'll just, I agree. I'll have to watch the tape.
You want me to go through it again, Larry? Or you want to watch the tape?
I'll watch the tape.
I think it's a good idea, Joe.
I think based on what you said, it's when they come back that second time, the next step of the process, if we get to that point, I should say.
Well, it would be part of any decision that anybody going in, that would see that as part of whoever's thinking of leasing the property too. I mean, that's already in there, so I think.
It's going to go in.
It's important to be now, but yes, they would have to abide by that, certainly.
Right.
That would be an add-on to the statement that's in number 10, you say, accept that and then.
So may I amend my motion? Would that be in order for me to amend my motion to include Joe's suggestion?
No, Joe's suggestion.
Okay.
He's amending an existing condition.
Okay. I see.
It would be part of the, part of the decision. I'd like to say, I want to thank you. You've been very good about your presentation. I realize it's very emotional for you. And the board has, the board listens to what you have to say. We try to put what you have to say in, if we make a decision, into the decision to protect you as much as possible. Again, this is a special permit. Special permit doesn't give you the reason to deny it. Special permit says this is the only thing that can go in that area. They have followed all the zoning bylaws in the town. And it's hard not to give it to them legally. They do not sue us, our names are around there because we're planning board members. We're not sued individually, so we're not under the gun as far as monetary problems or anything like that. But again, listening, listening to what the experts, and that's what they are, they are experts, and what the field they do, what they present, and how, how the protection is for you, is, I think they've covered as much as they, that they can. Route 16 is a pain. You should have seen Route 16 before 495 was built, when everybody had to go that way, it was worse. So that's, again, I want to thank you. You've been very, you've come in with a very emotional subject, and you've been very, very pleasing to have as an audience and participants, believe me. Thank you.
Very well-thought-out arguments.
Yes.
So do we all get to pay half the property taxes?
No, no, excuse me. I just, I just.
All property taxes are now.
The public hearing is.
I know, excuse me. I just said, been very good. Participation by the audience has closed down once we made the motion, so just continue to, please continue to be that way.
Oh, we should just be dosed on.
That's not what we mean. That's not what we mean. That's not what we mean.
Did the board, did the entire board vote?
No, we haven't voted yet.
Not voted yet.
You haven't stopped talking, have you?
We haven't voted yet.
Okay, Larry, it's easy.
I'm all set.
All set.
All set. All those in favor?
We have to close the public hearing.
You had it in that.
Yeah, just follow the motion, close the public hearing. All those in favor?
That's with Martha's and my in.
Yes.
My motion has amended, yep. And Joe's suggestion, yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Opposed? It's four in favor and one opposed.
Carries.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much.
Motion carries.
Yes, the motion carries.
Yes.
Moon Reg Law.
Joe asleep. The other Joe?
As you can see from some of the paperwork, FEMA and DCR is updating the flood regs and the flood maps. There's a new flood study. The town's required to update the zoning bylaw. It's informed all of that. So for the town to be able to offer residents the ability to buy flood insurance, we need to get these updated as soon as possible. So I included a copy of.
I know, I know. I don't know if you know my.
Sir. We're in the middle of the case. So the text that you have is based on the model. That's what DCR is requiring. I would ask that you let me send the memo to the select board to remand it for a hearing. So that would be the motion. I want me to send it, send the remand request to the select board.
They're updating them again, Larry? Or is this based on the last floodplain ones that we had?
No, this is new.
Again?
Yeah, the, yeah, the last one was 2011. And these, I forget what the date is, it's right in the preamble there. Under district delineation, the dates are updated July 8th.
Oh, it's 2011.
25.
I thought we, I thought they had updated recently, or maybe I'm thinking the one down the Cape.
Yeah, no, our last one was 2011. So anyway.
Make a motion. We sent it to the selectmen to put it on the upcoming warrant. A second.
Moved in second, we moved, sent this to the selectmen to be redacted back to us.
Yeah, I know.
Any further discussion? Here and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
Moved in second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Here and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Now on supply. Thank you. Good evening.